A meeting to order Clay Township Board of Trustees February 7th. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for coming, everybody. Survived snow Armageddon last week. We got the Olympics going on and Super Bowl next week, all kinds of stuff. Lots of fun on the ice this past weekend on Anchor Bay. Roll call.
Mark Burchard.
Here.
Maureen Bory.
Here.
Joanne Shirkey.
Here.
Artie Bryson.
Here.
Kristi Hilton.
Here.
Chris O'Regan.
Here.
Cindy Valentine.
Here.
Okay, we're all here, accounted for. Bill's payable, entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve Bill's payable in the amount of $144,450.72.
Support. Okay, we have motion support, any discussion or anything?
Yeah, the ferry fees, is that the new price or the old price that I'm looking at? Looks kinda high.
Probably the new price, we had to change a lot of tickets around, I don't have the detail.
It would be their new price because this would be their billing for January.
Okay, so that's forecasted, or not forecasted, but just...
I mean, it fluctuates month depending, they could buy four books this month for the DPW and buy none for the next four months, you know what I mean? So, same thing with the building department, depends how busy they are.
Any other questions? We have motion support, right?
Yes.
Roll call.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Kristi Hilton.
Yes.
Chris O'Regan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next, our supervisors report. Got a lot of positive things going on, dealing with blight and building issues. We had, we started three new actions the past since our last meeting. Working on our pension liability bonding, waiting to hear from the Department of Treasury on our application. We really thought we would have had it back last week or a week and a half ago, but we still haven't. And we pinged them Friday and they said they're still working on it. So they're still reviewing all our application and our numbers. Actually, I had several meetings postponed last week because of the big snowstorm. Still doing a lot of research on funding opportunities for our water main replacement project and our sewer interceptor project. Sherry, our assessing, and our assessing department had an audit on our assessing building, AMAR audit is called, and last week, and that went well. Kristi and I were working on updating, actually everybody, updating our charter accounts. So actually, it turned out to be a pretty big project and we're probably gonna have to get some help with the auditors to guide us along with this. And we're going out for bids on our work comp insurance. And then, we have a Zoom meeting with the Road Commission February 23rd, 4 o'clock. If any of the board members are interested, I can shoot you that info, I'll shoot you the link anyhow. Just a note to do that. Getting geared up for our summer and fall events. We actually had talks about combining our Scarecrow Festival with Sturgeon Fest, and both groups met. And that's going to be combined the last weekend of September, so that'll be cool. And doing a lot of other things. I wanted to thank Linda Schoonover, she actually sent out every employee, all our boards and everything, every employee of the township, milkweed seeds. And they're great for butterflies, so that was a, yeah, for the monarchs, that was very nice. And I've been doing a lot of work on Clay Days, our 200th year anniversary that we're celebrating in May. And I just wanted to thank, I'll tell you what, I haven't gotten into the Island Museum yet in great detail, but I wanted to thank the Elginak Clay Museum. I mean, these people have done so much work. And to have all this information readily available, and every time I go in there, I'm amazed of what I learn or see. But I wanted to thank Mick Isaacs, who's no longer with us, but he did a list of chronicles where he wrote about our history. And I talked to his family about plagiarizing his work, and they said, "No problem." And then there's Joan Bulley and Marilyn Genow, I mean, the countless hours that they've had to spend is incredible. But the history that we have is just amazing. I put some pictures on your, you know, in the mid to 1800s, late 1800s, there was a shipyard here. They built these huge ships, like this is a side wheeler, paddle wheeler, 91 of them were built here in Elginak. And I got all the names, the history of them all, it's very impressive. And just learning so much really cool stuff. We have a guy, Robert Falkert, that was buried in our cemetery, that he, I think he was buried in the mid 1800s or early 1800s. He was actually from France, he actually served in Napoleon's army and was at Waterloo. You know, it's just way cool stuff I'm running across. There's Mrs. Butterfield, she was the first architect, she's from Elginak, she was the first woman architect in the country. And she did, she actually designed a few of our churches. It's just amazing, the stuff I'm coming across, I mean, I could go on and on, but...
Falkert, is that the street named after him?
The what?
The street Falkert, I think it's named after him.
Oh, yeah, yeah. In fact, I got a lot of information on all the streets, the Tafts, Falkerts, Smiths, I mean, Genow, all of them, on their family history. And it's, like I say, it's really incredible. There's a cell Perry that's buried here, he's from Elginak. He actually built and raced and won some gold cups. Here, I didn't realize, he built the Notre Dame Unlimited Hydroplane and Miss Pepsi. And I posted it on Facebook, it was 1904, that Henry Smith, or Henry Smith, Henry Ford built this one car. It was called the 999, he called it. And in 1904, he took it out on Anchor Bay on the frozen lake and broke the land speed record in 1904 with this car. Didn't even have a steering wheel, he had a rod that he steered with, 91 miles an hour. I think he'd be a lot of those snowmobiles out there this, yesterday, running around. In 1904, he did that, and it's just, it goes on and on, it's really quite interesting. So anyhow, we're getting organized with Clay Days with all kinds of fun stuff, that's gonna be a really great event. So that's all I have for my supervisors' report. All right, moving on, public comments, do we have any public comments?
I just wanted to mention one thing. I know that here in Clay Township, our building is rigged with a tricaster, which is the audiovisual system in the back room there. And that is a gem. And we have capabilities of broadcasting things here live. And I'm wondering if we could start doing things live instead of having them recorded, so that the community can actually witness what's going on in real time?
We can look at, we'd have to run, I know we have to run broadband to it, but that's certainly a big problem.
Yeah, because we actually have a resident in Clay Township that's very, very good with that stuff. And he shared that he would be willing to train somebody up on how to utilize that system.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Forgot to say his name, Jim Newman.
Hi, Harold Steber, 7111 Marx, Harson's Island. If you can hear me okay?
Yep.
All right. I hate to come up here and be negative, but unfortunately, I mean, taking a look at this agenda, I have a couple of things to get off my mind. Number one, I find it offensive and insulting that you're having this meeting at 6 o'clock instead of 7 o'clock, because it kind of precludes those people that are working and have jobs, you know, from getting here to witness what's going on in our township. Second of all, I also find it insulting and offensive that the public comments are this early in the meeting when you haven't even got to the meeting yet. So, without reading the agenda, a lot of people don't know what you're gonna bring up, and then it precludes us from commenting, you know, on what's going on at the meeting. Number three, I know I'm only supposed to be up here three minutes, so I'll try to make it quick. Like I said, as I reviewed the agenda this evening, I found it difficult to comprehend that there was appointments to be made for the Planning Commission and the HIDA Board, and they're recommended by our township supervisor. To me, I know that these appointments are gonna directly affect ferry operations, I'm not, you know, going here for pro bridge or anything like that, but I'm just saying they're directly affecting ferry operations. And I think our supervisor should recuse himself from making suggestions or, you know, recommendations for appointments. Specifically, Planning Commission, I was at the Planning Commission on January 26th, and the Planning Commission is perfectly comfortable with their current structure and their current board makeup. And actually, they reappointed, and, you know, all their officers to the same position that they currently had. I noticed in the agenda here that there was an appointment by Artie for a new Planning Commission person, whose name is Robert Jacobs. I don't know the person, no offense against him, no mention of Whitey Simon, who's the current secretary and was reappointed secretary at the last Planning Commission meeting. So, not quite sure whether, you know, Township is aware of this, I'm sure they are, the board. Point number two under this is on the HIDA Board. Again, there's an appointment, Skip Tornell, who's a current member of HIDA Board, not a problem there, and appointment of Paul Cassidy. I don't know that anybody knows who he is, no offense to Paul Cassidy, whoever he is, but there were at least three or four other people that, you know, suggested they would like to participate on HIDA. And, you know, I don't see any mention of them in the agenda anywhere, so I don't know if the Township Board is even aware of them or not. I don't know that, that's what I'm asking. So, and my concern here is that with the additional information that Mr. Cassidy presented, he's in favor of, you know, alternate transportation to the island when it freezes over via use, you know, via a bus and an airboat. All I know is when I'm having a heart attack, I'm not taking a bus and an airboat to get to the hospital, it's not gonna get me there, I'm gonna be dead. So I'm just saying that, you know, in light of this, I hope the Township Board is aware of all the other options that are presented, other than what's being recommended here. Because I just think it's a little bit, to use the word, chicanery. And I just hope the Township Board, you know, is able to see through all that and comes up with some responsible decisions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. But I will respond on why I make the appointments by state statute. The supervisor appoints all members of the Planning Commission, and then they are approved by the board.
Right, but you're leaving off the other options, you're only putting one person out there, and there's other options already in place.
Everybody knows the options on this board.
Okay.
And on HIDA, it's, HIDA's own Articles and Corporation and Bylaws, that two of the members of HIDA is appointed by the supervisor and approved by this board. Two of the members are appointed from the Harson's Island St. Clair Flatis Association and approved by this board. And then there's one member at large that's appointed both by the supervisor and the association and approved by this board.
But my point is, the Township Board doesn't have to go with the recommendations, they can make up a roadmap.
No, they don't.
Okay, and that's all I'm saying, is I hope they, they see through...
That's the process.
The favoritism over here, and make some reasonable choices.
That's the process.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments?
Hi, I'm Jackie Byers, South Channel. I walked in late today because I waited 50 minutes at the ferry because a garbage truck with Harson's Island garbage was stuck. And there were three people out there, David, Noah, and a duck hand. It was, I couldn't watch half of it. It was like, I don't want to say what it was like, but it was, the school bus was waiting, I had appointments, and then the line got terribly long. So when you talk about HIDA, every one of you should be on board for this. It is the largest, the potential bridge is the largest economic project our Township has ever seen. It will only, you know, I've been on the island since the mid 60s, my parents, it's changed, and I've lived year round, 40 years ago. It's not the same transportation that we need. They work hard, you work hard, but we need to progress. We don't want stagnant so-so status quo. We want to see progress. And as an islander, I want to see safety. It looked like this was dipping today, and I'm thinking, oh, I get to go first or second next on the, you know, ferry. It's not acceptable. And I don't know if you were aware that we were 50 minutes waiting for garbage, were you, any of you aware?
Yeah.
Yeah. It was horrible. And I don't know what it took to take it off, but I'm just saying, I am like this gentleman, I don't want to, I like to live in peace. I want to get to my home. I am protecting my property values. I don't want to put up with this BS, which is, you're putting roadblocks in front of everything we want to do. And it's time for us to just say, do we want so-so, or do we want somebody with a vision? And that's, thank you for those who question a HIDA, that's Harson's Island. And you, we know the problems. Today, what would we have done, Artie, if someone was ill? The ferry wasn't going anywhere, not going anywhere for 50 minutes. You could have EMS over there, we're stuck on the island.
I think if you talk to chief, we have capabilities of doing, flying with helicopters.
Okay, what about a fire? There are a lot of what ifs, but the point is, it's, and they work hard. I'm not saying the Bryson family doesn't work hard, they do. But at the same time, I have an interest in the island, whoever is here has an interest in the island, we are property owners.
Okay.
So, you know, it's not, it's not status quo, it's change, it's progress. And, you know, and it's also with a ferry, it's your problem, the parking, it's not the MDOT because they have it posted, no parking. It's not David Bryson, he is allowed to do it. It's our township, we have to make this a more viable, and we have to have discourse on it. When we discuss this, there should be discussion, so, anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Hello there, Patty Bain, 757 North Channel. I attended the Planning Commission meeting last week, and there was a letter written by Ann Merrill, and I think Mark referenced that letter, we didn't, you didn't read the letter, but you referenced. And her question was, there's a lot of closed businesses, there's really not a lot on Harson's Island, and she wondered what the board was doing, and I think you said, "We're working on that." I don't expect any answer tonight, but if you could come back at the next Township meeting and just kind of, what is our township doing to help Harson's Island, who has one grocery store, you know, very few, and a lot of properties are for sale, so, businesses? So if you could help us out and let us know what your plan is, I'd greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Any more public comments? Okay, not seeing any, thank you for those. Moving right along, the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the board meeting minutes from 1/17/2022, check reports, and the resignation of Dee Welch and Kay Elcorn. That's all.
Support. Okay, we have motion support, any questions or anything on the consent?
What's the bond refund about from Leonard Kaprowski Trust?
On the consent agenda?
The check reports.
On the check report?
Check report.
There's probably a bond from the billing department.
How much is it for, Mark?
It says Leonard Kaprowski Trust, bond, $1,000.
This is a bond refund.
It says it right there.
Yeah, it's a bond refund for the...
Building department.
Building department.
A bond refund.
Okay, anything on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor of the consent agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, motion carries. Next, we have the Fire Chief's report.
Fire Chiefs' report for January of 2022. I did not attend any meetings in the month of January. I did submit the AFG grant on the 21st of last month, and that'll be for the new portable radios. Keep our fingers crossed, hopefully we'll get something out of that this year. The ferry was shut down twice in the month of January due to large ice flows coming down the river. We did have our personnel in place on the island station both times. I would like to replace the Fire Boat One. I've been looking at seeing what grants are available for that. Hopefully, we can find a grant that we could get to replace that boat.
Do we do that through a Homeland Security grants, or it would be like a...
We could do a port security grant.
A port security grant.
So, I'll be looking at that when that comes due. The Fire Department did respond to Russell Island on two occasions in the month of January. We did use a new airboat, we had to take the police across due to a suspicious person walking around the island, and the other one was a homeowner who was working on his property, or his cottage, and his boat broke down, so we went and kind of rescued him. We're very pleased with the new boat, it does take rough water a lot better than the other one, so we're very pleased with it. Fire Department responded to 1,565 runs in the month, or the year of 2021, and that was both stations. And out of that, we responded to 292 calls on the island.
Yeah, the fire this past week too on the island, that year, a house fire that you...
Yes, we did.
You knocked it down pretty quick, and...
Yes.
And saved the house, actually.
Yes.
Kudos.
One of those closures on the ferry was in the middle of the night, wasn't it, like 1:00 in the morning or something?
Yes.
You were able to get people in place, you gave enough notice?
Yes, we were.
That's good. Who does our grant writing or request for grants, you guys do it?
Yeah.
I thought you had attorney or somebody helping you.
No.
You do it yourself, okay? Kudos.
I'd like to point out, the Chiefs' report, he does a great job with drafting and incidents reported on this.
Yeah.
And we've been going at it for what, a year and a half, or a couple of years?
Couple of years now.
It's very useful information, at least to me anyways, and obviously the chief.
Out of that, it's both departments, what I will do, I will include the island runs on that also. Thank you.
Thanks, chief. All right, under unfinished business, we have cemetery fence. And it was postponed the last one, and I think I left it on my desk, I had the old quote, it was $2,400 and something. But I'd like to proceed with getting the fence going, I must have left it.
Were we waiting for another quote or something?
No, we had, we had several quotes.
We were talking about whether we could claim it on the insurance.
Yeah, I guess there was discussion on claiming on the insurance or not, which I myself is torn, I mean, we could save $1,000 bucks on our insurance, but we're gonna be shopping for new insurance. And I know if you hit more than three claims, you know, your rate goes up when you shop it up. So is it worth to save $1,000 bucks or not? You know, we pay an awful lot of money, like 120 grand for our general liability insurance, so...
Well, I have a question on that, $2,400, if you're gonna replace that fence section, is it going to be identical to the fence that's up there already?
No.
Or is it going to be different?
It's gonna be slightly different.
Then why don't we try to find some used fencing that they there, or something like that, something close to it, if it's not gonna be exact on the quote, and do that, pick it up and put it in, we can do it ourselves.
Well, I mean, we could have that discussion, but I would, do you have information for me?
It's gonna be identical.
Is it identical? Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
It's made by elite out of my comments.
Okay, I thought it was slightly different.
No, no, there was a couple other ones that we did get priced on that were just slightly different, but they did say we would notice a big difference.
All right, do you have the price on that, it was 24...
2429.
Okay. So, entertain a motion, we can go ahead with ordering the fence and doing the repairs, we can leave it up for discussion if we think it's best to do an insurance claim on it or not.
Is that our first claim, or would that be our third?
Well, it goes by the year, I'm not, is it, I...
It's the amount of claims you have in three years.
In three years.
Our police department, I love them dearly, but they do a number on our insurance when it comes to deer versus cars, so...
Yeah.
Well, do we, our police department investigated the accident over there, right?
Yeah.
Okay, and we know who did it or anything like that?
No.
So we don't have any cameras?
No, we got no subrogation methods.
No.
They've exhausted that search, my understanding.
So I'll entertain...
I'll make a motion for to approve the Nationwide Construction Group quote of $2,429 to replace three of the four-foot-high Elite Aluminum EFF 25 industrial gate ornamental fence panels.
Support.
Okay, motion support, aim, discussion.
So the only reason we didn't approve this at the last meeting was, you know, I was unclear at the time if this fell under our GL, or if it was individual coverage specifically designed exactly for the cemetery. So now I've learned that this falls under our blanket coverage, right? So we've got a $1,000 deductible, which isn't great, but, you know, we're covered for, you know, millions and millions of dollars. This is a peanut-type claim, it'd be like, you know, your insurance company at your house filing a water damage claim for $1,000 bucks when you got a $500 deductible, you know, it's one of the same. And really raises eyebrows and has the potential to negatively impact our future rates. It does.
Yeah.
Only because, once you file the claim, it's now on record that the Township has filed that claim, so when they try and get it through underwriting, it potentially could raise an eyebrow. So I, I mean, you know, I'm not an insurance agent, I do understand the game a little bit, and that's why I'm making the motion, it's my recommendation, we just... It's my recommendation. We just get the fence taken care of. Because I think it will benefit the township in the long run.
Well, thank you for the insurance education.
And it's just my recollection and my usage of the knowledge, you know?
We can have a lot bigger claims than that.
I'm certainly not an expert. I'm sure there's some insurance agents around that would take exception to that, but.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion of repairing the fence for $2,429? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carries. Okay, next, we have a discussion on our meeting times. There's been discussion on moving it back to 7:00.
I'll make a motion that we keep the meeting time at 6:00 since I was the one that made the motion to begin with when we changed it. If somebody wants to support it, we can then discuss and get into details of why we changed the meeting time to 6:00.
Well, I really don't know why we changed the meeting time, but-
Okay, we got support.
Support for discussion to get it for discussion.
Okay.
I don't know the real reason that we changed the meeting time. However, in several meetings that I've been, especially with the Planning Commission and here, you know, we are working for the people of Clay Township, not for the board. And my feeling is that as many requests we have to go back to 7:00, I think it warrants to change the time from 6:00 to 7:00.
I think there's confusion, too, because the Planning Commission and other, they're holding their meetings at 7:00, and we're holding ours at 6:00. And, you know, people will call me, "What time is this meeting again?" So keeping them all at 7:00 is uniform for the public. I mean, I know in the beginning, we thought, well, a lot of people are going on Zoom. They're working from home now. But things have changed, and I think we're a little bit more commuting again. So I think I'm in favor of going back to 7:00 for the people.
Well, the Zoom really didn't have anything to do with the reason why we changed the meetings. The biggest part of the reasons was our department heads that come in at 6:00 in the morning and that are required by their contract to be here at these meetings. Our vendors, I'm not talking, our department heads are not elected. Our department heads come in here and work 6:00 a.m. and work 12 hours a day. We also had extensive conversations with our vendors and our contractors that we expect to have at these meetings, that were having a harder time difficulty getting here later on in the evening, and had voiced concerns to us that other board members or other boards that they attend are starting earlier, so.
From my understanding as well, with the new system, we can have people actually type in and respond, the vendors, instead of being here. If we had the meetings live, they could respond that way instead of having to drive here and be at the meeting.
They're just broadcast live.
But their interaction can take place as well because when he was here, you weren't at that meeting. But he pulled me aside and said what Jim Newman was saying. This machine, not only can you broadcast live, but we can have, you know, a board up here or in a board that we could see, or this board, and it would have someone in the audience, kind of like you see on Facebook Live, where they type in some comment. We can have that. And we can only have it open to the vendors if we wanted to.
I would think that we would have to have somebody from, that knows what they're doing.
Well, and this gentleman offered to train.
That's a road to a different discussion, but-
Well, that can affect-
But that can't be handled. And number one, we're working for the people. Is that, are we working for the contractors or are we working for the people?
Well, and the contractors can do this. And the person that told me about this offered to come in and train to do that. So that's not, that's not an issue. So it can be done.
I've also had feedback from quite a few people. They don't like driving at night. They rather, they like it at 6:00. They like for that. I'm telling you the comments I've had. I've also, the St. Clair County Commissioners, all their meetings are at 6:00. And that's the reason they moved them to 6:00, too, is for driving at night. And actually, I think, I don't know, correct me if I'm wrong, haven't we had better attendance since we moved them to 6:00?
Yes, I didn't, I didn't get that.
Versus when we had them at 7:00 for the past two years?
The last two months, our attendance has been great at 6:00. We're more people than I've ever been here at 7:00.
Well, I'm just saying, our attendance has been better at 6:00 than they have been for years at 7:00. So.
No one's really come on to ask us to keep it at 6:00.
Yeah, I mean, I have people. I've had people.
Well, nobody's asked me.
You did, didn't you, Chris? You had three.
After the last meeting.
So. So.
Well, I offered a compromise. Said, why don't we do 6:30 or 6:45? That way, you make it a little bit, a little bit later. Gives people another half hour at least to get off work and get here. If they're working in Detroit and they don't get out until 5:00, it's really difficult to get here at 6:00. But, you know, they should be able to get here by 6:30. So why not compromise and do something like that?
Well, I do like the idea of doing research and making our meetings more interactive. So if people aren't here, they can still interact. And to me, that doesn't matter if it's at 6:00 or 7:00. But-
But I don't know if you're going to let everyone interact, are you? You're just going to let the vendors interact? Like, I didn't know if you would open it up to everybody.
They're in public comments, yeah. So. So anyhow. Any more discussion with the board? Okay, the motion is to actually keep the meetings at 6:00. So all in favor of the motion keeping the meetings at 6:00? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Nay.
No.
Okay, we, record, we have two opposed. So motion carries. Okay, under new business, we have an update from PCE on our SAW update. And unfortunately, he's sick. So that will be postponed again. He did tell me just a few numbers that he has, we have a little over 20% of the money. We got a $1.1 million grant to basically check out our sewer system. And he has about 20%, a little over 20% left on it, which equals about $220,000. And that's enough to, more than enough to finish everything. We have to do is for his reporting and testing. And so we'll try to get him here for our next meeting for our update on our sewer system. So.
So already, after that $200,000 has been expended, right?
Mm-hmm.
I remember talking to Anthony about this years ago when they set this up.
Yeah.
Can we expect a full, like, laid-out engineering report?
We're having a meeting up here. If you want a meeting back there, please take it outside. Thank you.
Can we expect a full engineering report from PCE?
I mean it. Please be quiet. I'm sorry.
So this is, this is an exploratory, right?
Yes.
Effort with cameras, scoping, engineering, right? And I believe what Anthony's role with PCE is is he's going to develop a whole list of recommendations, spots that are going to require our attention, right?
Mm-hmm.
So can we expect that we're going to have a meeting once this last $200,000 of the grant is expended?
Oh, we'll have a big report.
We'll have a big report from Anthony?
Yes.
Or John?
Yeah. And also, too, I'd like to mention, I know in year two and a half of the grant, which is coming up pretty soon, we have to do our rate study. And I'm suggesting that we put a committee together to serve for that rate study. We can do that, you know, down the road. But if we have volunteers for the rate study, I would see if Lance, I'd put Lance on it, our interim head, well, soon-to-be interim head of our wire department, and a couple of board members on it, so.
Isn't that primarily coming from the software we purchased?
Yep, yep, yep. But it's something that we should, we should look at. Chrissy's really involved in that, so I would want her on it, too, so. So I'll make, or I'll entertain a motion to postpone our SAW grant update.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to postpone our PCE SAW update. What, is two weeks good?
Well, I suggest Artie gets back in touch with Anthony.
Yeah.
We can just-
Just postpone it later.
I'd like to postpone our PCE SAW update.
Yep.
Support.
Motion in support.
Okay, we have motion in support. Any more discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next, we have our Police Department Motorola Agreement, Service Agreement. Needs to be renewed. It's for $5,867. And entertain a motion, or if anyone has any questions?
Make a motion to approve the Motorola Service Agreement for Dispatch in the amount of $5,867, line 207932.
Support.
Motion in support. I know Motorola is the only game in town for it, so we're kind of... Is this the same cost, Chief?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought. It's the same cost as last year. It hasn't gone up, so.
It's a budget item.
Yep. Okay, we have motion in support. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next, I'd like to set a joint board meeting with this board, our trustees, our planning commission, and our ZBA. And we have a date of February 23rd that's been thrown out there. If that sounds good, I'll entertain a motion.
What's the time and what's the-
Probably be at 7:00.
And what, what are, what are we all getting together to discuss? It's a joint?
Well, we'll come up with the agenda. But a lot of us just, you know, communicating with each other and seeing if there are, you know, needs and if there are any changes we need. And we've had two in the past. We didn't do it last year with COVID. So we're just going to bring it back.
So it's a normal, once-a-year thing you do?
Well, yeah, we started, we've had it twice, and it was, it was well-received.
All right, I'll make a motion to set a joint board meeting for the Board of Trustees, the Planning Commission, and the ZBA for February 23rd, 2022, at 7:00 p.m.
What day is that?
Wednesday.
So Wednesday. Okay, motion, support. Any discussion?
Did we check with the other board heads?
I know we have with the Planning Commission. And I'll check with the ZBA. So I'll communicate with them tomorrow.
All right, well, let's set it, and if it works, great. If it doesn't, then we may have to.
Yep.
Obviously, we want everybody there, right?
Yep.
Yeah, that falls in line with the Planning Commission.
Yeah, it'll be a regular Planning Commission meeting, so.
Does anybody have the dates for the Planning Commission?
Hmm?
Everybody have a copy of the dates for the Planning Commission? Should have anyways.
That is their actual date, so.
Yeah, it's the actual date.
Is it going to mess up there?
Right, I'm just talking about throughout the year.
So it's going to mess up their meeting to have us?
No, it was, it was brought up by Kathy. Yeah, it was Kathy's suggestion.
All right, great.
The ZBA meets on Wednesdays, if there is anybody, you know, to come.
Right, everyone meets on Wednesday, so. All right, so we have a motion to set a joint board meeting between Planning Commission, ZBA, and the trustees on February 23rd at 7:00. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, next, we have Planning Commission appointment. Robert Jacobs. And I'm recommending appointment of Robert Jacobs to the Planning Commission. Roberts lived in our township 17 years with wife and family. He has two kids in Algonax Schools. He has a strong background in municipality projects along with a good knowledge and understanding of our own infrastructure. Has firsthand experiences with reviewing ordinances and our own community issues. I believe that Robert will be a big asset on our Planning Commission moving forward. And here's, you have his letter of interest that he sent to me. And I'll open it. Well, if there's a motion and support, I'll open it up for discussion.
I'll make a motion to appoint Robert Jacobs to the Planning Commission with a term ending of 11/15/2024. Support.
Okay, a motion in support. Any discussion?
Yep.
Is he here?
I don't think he is.
Well, I'm on the board, Planning Commission, the board rep. And I've been supporting the board for, ever since I've been on it, basically. And that's prior to my elected six years ago now. There's no doubt that the candidate that you just qualified, him is being experienced and education and so forth. However, holding a value of fairness and as it relates to the current commissioner being replaced, I imagine that's a theme, isn't it? That he's going to replace somebody?
Well, yeah, I'm not, Whitey is not being reappointed as Mr. Jacobs.
Okay, well, he was elected last Wednesday on the Planning Commission.
He was appointed by your board.
Appointed unless you, okay, and voted in as being appointed.
As a secretary.
Right.
And if he's replaced, I'm not saying he is. If he's replaced, they can have somebody else be the secretary.
There is, there's a lot of support for Whitey. You know, and I and the board seems to want him there. We've heard from, during public comments, that, you know, the public wants him there. I'm not sure why you don't want to reappoint Whitey. He's got a lot of knowledge. He served for years. He's got the time to do it. He's got the zeal for it. I mean, I know you took me aside before and told me you had some concerns about Whitey attacking the board and these kinds of things, and.
Well, I'm, I'm looking at the qualifications of Mr. Jacobs and his experience and diverse knowledge. I think with the current makeup of the Planning Commission, it would be a good fit with the current Planning Commission. And he brings added expertise where they, that existing board might not have. And so I, I-
I think they have.
Well, it's, it's not a popularity contest. It's, I'm doing it based on qualifications.
You've seen eight years of experience. Is it qualified?
Yes, I have. Yes, I have. But I'm just hoping that it's not any impartiality or, you know, prejudice against Whitey. I don't want that to be your decision at all.
It's the board's decision. It's not my decision. I'm just bringing it forward.
Well, it is your decision when you don't appoint Whitey. And I don't want it to be, you know, against our principles of governance, that you're impartial against Whitey and you won't appoint him. I'm just, I take a little offense to it because I think the board is very well-qualified. They have nine people, and they have a lot of experience, as Robert Jacobs has. And I wish he was here tonight. I mean, why is he not even here?
I'm a little confused, Maureen. At the last meeting, I wasn't here, but I heard that you read a letter from Diane Miller stating that the township's set up in four different areas. You got your river area, you got the west side, you got the backroads, and you got the island. And, I mean, you read the letters, basically.
It was her public comment. She could not be here. So it wasn't that I wanted to read her letter. She requested me to read the letter. So that's just like someone, let me finish.
Please, you're interrupting me. No, you're, let me finish, okay? So you, you read the letter. It really wasn't necessary to read the letter. It was to the whole board.
This was-
No.
All right, well, I'll wait.
Will you let me speak? When somebody, you know, public comments are public comments to the board. When someone emails the whole board and has put in the consent agenda, is received and filed, that constitutes as a public comment to the board, and it's on record. And you, by reading it, you kind of put your stamp of approval on it. And you, by reading it, you kind of put your stamp of approval on it. That's what I assume. And this appointment does exactly what was suggested in that letter. It's another representative on the west side of the township. You know, on the Planning Commission. So we have three on the island. We have two on the west side. We have two along the river, and we have two on the backroads. And that's exactly what you read as suggested in that letter, so that's why I'm a little confused. And by you reading it, you kind of put your stamp of approval on it.
I totally disagree. When someone emails me as an elected official to serve the people and requests that I read a letter, public comments are just what that said. Now, don't interrupt me, Artie. Public comments are just what that is. Public comments. It's not a comment to the board and all seven of us see it, so now it's acknowledged as a public comment. A public comment is someone who wants the public to know what they think. That's my opinion, okay? You have a different opinion, I guess. I think that it is our obligation if someone sends us a letter and asks us to read it because they can't attend because they are ill or I think she had a knee problem or something. And there were several other letters that were for Whitey. There's some that I, you know, I may have read too, and other people have said. So you're picking out that one letter saying that I put my stamp of approval on it to try to say that this is what I want. And I take offense to that. So I feel it is necessary to read the letter. And I've heard from people on this board that.
We're kind of getting into the weeds here, Artie. There's a motion on the table about appointing a Planning Commission member or not.
So it's okay for Artie to talk as long as he wants, but if I go on, I'm in the weeds. I got it.
No, I was just confused, that's all. So anyhow, is there any more discussion? We have a motion on the floor.
And support.
And support to appoint Robert Jacobs to the Planning Commission. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none. Let's do roll call.
Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Kristi Hilton.
Yes.
Chris O'Regan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Burchard.
No.
Maureen Bory.
No offense to Robert Jacobs, but no.
Okay, motion passes, five to two. All right, next we have a resolution reconfirming the Planning Commission. I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to reconfirm the Planning Commission, Resolution 2002-01.
Support.
Okay, we have motion in support. Any discussion?
Well, at the Planning Commission meeting that I did attend, Joanne, they did say we could keep the Planning Commission at nine, so that's what we're talking about, reconfirming it.
This is reconfirming, we're not. Yeah, we're not changing the makeup of the Planning Commission or changing.
I'm just confirming that.
It's reconfirming the Planning Commission.
Okay.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Kristi Hilton.
Yes.
Chris O'Regan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, next we have a reappointment of Skip Torono, Toronjo.
She didn't get Joanne.
Oh, you got Joanne's.
Oh, Joanne Shirkey.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Yes, okay, motion passes. All right, next we have the reappointment of Skip Toronjo to the HIDA board. He's currently on the HIDA board and's been a pretty effective, actually a real effective member on the HIDA. And I'd like to reappoint him.
It's T-O-R-N-O-W, right?
Yeah, Torono.
Torono?
Torono.
Torono. Can she announce? No, not here?
No, I don't think so. Last I talked to him, he was in Wisconsin.
Can you explain, you know, why you say he's been very effective? Because I don't know too much about HIDA and what's been happening.
Well, he's been on their board and I believe he's been their secretary. And he's made all the meetings. He's corresponded with all the required information from HIDA to this board or into the township. That's why I think he's been a good member for HIDA.
I just was trying to define effective, so thank you.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to reappoint Skip from February 2022 to February 2024.
Support. Okay, motion in support. Any more discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, motion carries. Next, we have the appointment of Paul Cassidy. I emailed Marge Baldwin, who was on the board, and she replied to me she did not wish to be reappointed. So I reached out to actually Marge and a few other HIDA members and also the Harson's Island Sinclair Flats Association to see if, you know, they had any input on it. And we did have three island residents apply and one from the mainland apply. And I really wouldn't exclude anyone from the mainland, like for instance, if they lived on the mainland but worked on the island and went across every time, every way that way. But that wasn't the case in this case. But I'm recommending Paul Cassidy. I attached his letter of interest. He has owned property, his family's owned property on the island since 1945. Lived here permanently since 2010 and he's an attorney and a retired judge in Macomb County. And I feel that, talking to HIDA people in the past about, I mean, they expressed the opinion to me that they need some legal expertise and everything. And this appointment would do just that with Paul's background, legal background.
You say he was a retired judge?
Mm-hmm.
Is he here today?
Is Paul here? Yes, he's right there.
Hi, Paul.
We want to.
I don't know.
Do you want to say anything?
Say anything, or it's up to you?
Hold on, I think you received my letter.
Yep. We did.
Thanks for.
Questions that you have to answer.
So we have motion in support. Any more discussion?
Nope, we do not.
Well, only the fact that we haven't had a update on the HIDA in some time, from HIDA, have we?
Well, we're supposed to do a yearly update.
I know it's been some time since we've had it, so that's the only comment I wanted to make about it.
We don't have motion in support, but I'll make a motion to approve, to appoint Paul Cassidy, February 22 to February 24.
Support.
Okay, we have motion in support. Any more discussion?
Well, what about the other three people? I mean, I thought we would discuss that as a board on all of them, but I kind of thought maybe you weren't gonna appoint somebody because you told Margie that time anything to do with Harson's Island and that could be conflict you wouldn't be involved in, so.
HIDA is for the transportation authority or is for transportation to the island. It necessarily isn't anything about a bridge.
Okay, all right, I got you.
Okay? And under HIDA's bylaws, not ours, HIDA's bylaws, I, as supervisor, have to appoint.
You shouldn't vote. You shouldn't vote.
Okay, I won't vote. I don't have a problem with that.
Well, I mean, I think Paul is here. I think that's a good sign. Out of all the people we're appointing tonight, he's the only one that showed up. That's a good sign, and I agree with you.
All right, can I call for a vote?
Oh, so I can't discuss it?
Any more discussion?
Okay, no, I guess not.
Any more discussion?
Yeah, Artie, I wanted to thank Michael, Jim, and Donna, who all look like solid candidates. It's a pleasure to at least have options to be able to review. I will say that there are three other term limits that come up.
Next year.
Yeah, I'm sorry, expirations. It doesn't mean they're not term limited. There are expirations that come up again next February. Now, if those people choose to be reappointed, you know, within the board, that's fine, but there's two from the island and the one member at large, so.
Yeah, two of the members that need to be reappointed next year are going to be appointed by the, I assume they'll be appointed by the Harson's Island Sinclair Flats Association, approved by this board. And then one member at large, which would, the supervisor and the Harson's Island Sinclair Flats Association both have to agree on.
Have to come to an agreement, right?
And then be approved by this board.
Yeah, so if there's still interest, you know, depending on what happens, it's just, it's nice to have options.
Right. So, hearing that, any more?
Excuse me, your family's been on the island since 1945, so seventy-six years, right? Don't ask me how I know that number.
That's good, yeah.
All right, all in favor of appointing Paul Cassidy to the Harson's Island Transportation Authority signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next, we have a fire department hiring a new person for our fire department chief.
She couldn't be here tonight because she had to work, but I would like to bring her up in front of the board. I would like permission to hire one new part-time firefighter. Her name is Courtney, and I hope I'm pronouncing this right, Lee Lechowski. She currently works for Henry Ford Hospital as an ED, excuse me, an ED tech. And she also works at Metstar Ambulance. Courtney has her firefighter one and firefighter two, Michigan, and she also is a state-certified EMT. She completed her training at Macomb County Fire Academy, and she's passed her background check.
Sounds ambitious.
Yep.
Board, I'll make a motion to hire Courtney A. Luzachowski for the Clay Township Fire Department.
Support.
Okay, motion in support. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Another good candidate.
That's right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Yeah, she looks like a fine candidate.
She will, she said she'll be at the next board meeting this month, so.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Chief. All right, next, on our agenda, as you know, John DeBoyer, head of our water department, retired. And for his replacement, I wanted to hire Lance Schurty. He's been in our water department for, how many years, Lance? Thirty-two years. He's working under John and he's actually been doing his job since January, but we gotta make it official. I'll tell you, between the first of the year and today, he's had four water main breaks and he's taken.
One in front of my house.
Care of, and one that Mark broke in front of his house. So he's been proving himself more than capable. And in front of you is an interim contract that goes to the end of June. And at that time, we would say, you know, Lance, you're gonna be our guy or not at the end of June. And I did get, so the board knows, a letter of understanding with the union that's allowing him to work as a supervisor. And if for some reason Lance doesn't like it or anything, he can go back to the operating union without loss of seniority or anything. So it'd be unfair to say, hey, you know, we're gonna take you from the union and put you in this position. And he may not like it and want, you know, but six months or five, now five months, he should be able to make that decision, so.
I'll make a motion to appoint Lance Schurty as the DPW intern supervisor through June first?
Thirtieth.
Thirtieth.
Support.
Okay, motion in support. Of course, Mark doesn't want to lose his water. That's why he made the motion, so.
I'm gonna ask him how we fixed it, with a saddle or a new pipe, so.
Saddle.
Saddle, yeah.
So, any more discussion or anything?
Good looking out for him with the union, that's good.
Yeah, next we will. Okay, hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Kristi Hilton.
Yes.
Chris O'Regan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes, motion carries. All right, next, we have to fill Lance's spot that's vacated as crew lead. And for that, well, he's the only one really qualified at the time. We got Jerry Dome to backfill as the crew leader effective January third, nineteen twenty-two. And that's my recommendation.
Was it Jerry that went over to Elginak for a short period of time or not?
No.
Somebody else? Well, he went to Elginak.
I don't know.
I guess it doesn't matter.
I don't know, but.
Nobody has since I've been here. I said, no one since I've been here.
No.
So, board, I'll make a motion that we approve Jerry Dome to interim team leader with effective date of January third and interim until June the thirtieth, 2022.
Support.
Okay, motion in support. And likewise, with the union, we have the same letter of standing that if it needs to be, you know, it'd go backwards. If needed for any reason, so.
Maureen, did you support that?
I did.
Okay, we have motion in support. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Okay, next we have a special assessment, Resolution One for the Old Club. They want to repave their road that goes from the turnaround to the main gate. It's a private road. And this resolution basically says we agree to go forward. In fact, you know, gathering costs and information for them to go ahead and do this. So we have several special assessments on private roads, and this is the first step of another one.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2202, the special assessment district for the Old Club, Resolution Number One.
Support.
Okay, we have motion in support. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, roll call.
Chris O'Regan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Kristi Hilton.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. All right, board member comments. Cindy.
Well, I'd like to thank Linda Schoonover for the milkweed seeds she generously sent to everybody here at the township for the butterflies. It should be nice in the spring. Welcome Courtney to the Clay Township Fire Department, Robert Jacobs to Planning Commission, Paul Cassidy to HIDA. And thank you to Skip for his interest in being reappointed to HIDA.
Okay. Mark?
Yeah, I'd like to welcome the new hires, the interim hires, and good luck to the people that left us. And we have a Harson's Island, Lylelands muskrat dinner tomorrow, so I hope all have tickets for it. If you like muskrat.
I'll be there.
So that's all I have right now.
Sounds good.
Okay, Maureen?
Well, congratulations to everyone new that we've brought on board. I'm kind of sad about Whitey. Sorry, Whitey, thank you for your years of service. We appreciate it. As I do understand it, I think there's a HIPSA meeting on Saturday and a HIDA meeting following that, just to let people know they want to attend that, and have a great Valentine's Day.
Joanne?
Well, the only, I can say ditto to what Cindy Valentine said and what Mark said and what Maureen said.
Yeah.
We'll repeat it all.
Okay, Chris?
Yeah, thanks to the, the HIDA candidates, Donna, Jim, Michael, and Paul. Those are four really solid applications. Looked like they were really qualified. So the, the township should feel really good about the replacement of, of Marge. I'd like to say congratulations to the Elginak wrestling program.
Yeah.
Are you going to expand on that a little bit?
I could. I wasn't.
Okay, I'm going to let you do that. And, yeah, thank you to Linda. And lastly, we've got a little bit of warm-up the next couple of days, and then it looks like it's going to get really cold again. So if your driveway looks anything like mine, you know, I was able to throw some calcium chloride down. It's very effective when it's above 20. So calcium chloride doesn't destroy concrete, doesn't get into the pores, won't destroy it like a salt will. But, you know, I don't know if you're, if you're into getting your driveway cleaned off, the next couple of days are going to be imperative, and it looks like it gets really cold again on the weekend.
Yep.
Um, I just want to remind everyone that property, 2021 property tax is due Monday, February 14. We do have an agreement with North Star Bank, so if you did want to make your, your clay tax payment at North Star Bank, perhaps on a Friday when we're not open, you just need to have your coupon, and they will accept a tax payment.
Kristi, are you guys open for lunch? Are you closed still for lunch?
We'll probably be open for lunch on Monday.
Because I've had islanders come across and they, you're closed. Why are you closed for lunch?
We are closed for lunch so that we don't have a constant shortage from 11 until 2 o'clock in the afternoon of being short staff. No, it hasn't been like that. We, we did it during COVID. We started closing the office because we did a sanitize of the lobby during that time as well.
Okay.
Um, so then we spoke last meeting about the Elginak muskrat wrestling team, so I just wanted to report that they did beat Richmond after 21 years.
Yay!
Yeah, they beat them 31 to 29. So it was, it was right down to the last match. So it was really exciting.
All right. Thanks Patty Bain, Jim Newman, and Harold for public comments. We encourage that. And also, I did send an email to Whitey thanking him for being on the planning commission and, and that, you know, I, I mentioned, if you can leave a, leave a situation better than you found it, it's a, it's a good thing, and I believe that's what, that he did. Congratulations to Courtney and the new team of our, or new member of our fire department, and to Robert Jacobs and Paul, and also Skip for re-upping with HIDA. And yes, I will be at the rat dinner.
Thanks to Jackie Byer, too.
Tomorrow night? Oh, yeah, Jackie Byer, too, yep. Thank you. And it's all kinds of, all kinds of positive stuff going on in the township, and I've been really working hard on our history, and I'm just having a blast doing it. All kinds of cool stuff that we can be proud of for living here.
Kathy might want to say something?
I just have a quick comment, because I was waiting for this agenda, and our meeting, like, we, our response to us about what happened at the board, and I thought maybe I could let you know what happened in our January meeting. That's why I didn't stand up to anything. I was waiting to see what we can do. But since we haven't done it, I just wanted to give a quick, in the spirit of communication and knowing what's going on, we did hold our January meeting. We did reconfirm the planning commission because we had two motions. We did reconfirm, confirm the planning commission, which the attorney for the township and the planner helped us through. Thank, thank you very much. But we also had the second motion, and it was, hold me on, I believe Chris Elton made the motion, both motions, as a matter of fact, and we think maybe Christine supported it for the size of the planning commission. So I just want clarification, if possible. Sorry, Mark, I can't hear anything, it looks like. Are both those issues covered in your reconfirmation of the planning commission tonight or not?
The, the, we, we reconfirmed the planning commission as required. And to, to change the amount of people on the, on the planning commission, that takes a change of the ordinance, which we did not do. So it's, it's status quo.
That way I can report back to our.
Yep, yep, it's status quo, yes.
That's what I was trying to ask, and you were saying, was confirming, but that the size will stay the same.
No, there was two motions that were made, and I.
And, and this board took, took, your, did with your planning commission.
With your recommendations.
Yes.
But unfortunately, it didn't get, um, conveyed, at least from tonight, at tonight's meeting. Anybody in the audience would not know that unless they were at our planning commission meeting, or just to jump publicly, look at it, this tape later. They would not know that happened. So I just thought in the spirit of fairness and informational communication and all that, that would be, I chose this time. So I know there's a lot for Mark to do, so I just thought I'd help him out to some level at this time.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Kathy.
Thank you.
Chairperson.
Okay.
All right, one more motion.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Yes, all in favor. Thank you. Thanks for coming, everybody.
Thank you.
Motion adjourn.